I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Before we get underway, there's a few administrative matters that I need to address. First, the fire exit is located to your left. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion downstairs and do not use the elevator, use either the north or the south entrances from the building. The minute, meeting minutes are being taken normally by our secretary Michelle, who's unable to be with us tonight, so we have Heidi filling in for her. The minutes of the meeting are not a verbatim transcript, they're not intended to be, and they are not. But when you come to the podium, please identify yourselves clearly by speaking into the microphone with your name, your address. If you are the applicant, at that point you would pause, raise your right hand to be sworn, and then you can proceed to state your case. After the applicant presents their case, then we open it up to public input. During the public in portion, we've identified three areas of public input. First is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The second is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And the third are those who are neither for or against the application, but want to talk to us about some aspect of the application that they would like to address. So when that public input portion is concluded, then we give the applicant the opportunity to return to the podium and address any concerns that arose from the public input. We follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available on the table by the door to your left. As I said, we'll call the case, the applicant comes forward. Then we, during the presentation, the members of the board have an opportunity to ask questions or engage in discussion with the applicant. When the case is open for public input, the public input is not addressed to the applicant, it is addressed to the board. And there is no opportunity for questioning of the applicant or engaging in a discussion with the applicant. The questions and discussions are directed to the board. When we've concluded with the applicant's presentation, the public input portion, and any response that is presented by the applicant, we will close the case and move on to the next case on the agenda. Once all the cases on our agenda have been heard, the board will take a short recess. We will reconvene and discuss the cases and deliberate on them in the order in which they appear on the agenda and for which the applicant remains present. So if the first applicant has left and the second applicant is present, we would take the second applicant first and then take the first applicant. During the deliberation portion of the meeting, there is no opportunity for public input or discussion unless it is specifically requested by a member of the board. If you're interested in knowing the results, you don't have to stay to find out. You're welcome to catch it on TV or Facebook or other places where I understand our meetings are broadcast and disseminated. You can also call the town hall at nine o'clock in the morning, ask for the planning and zoning department, and they'll be glad to tell you what decisions we made. So, also, I would like to, before we get underway with the case matters on the agenda, I would like to note that today I received a letter of resignation from Mr. Johnson, who has served on the zoning board for several years. And I was sorry to receive that letter, but I wish Mr. Johnson well in his future endeavors. So that also means that we now have two vacancies on the zoning board. One from Mr. Johnson, and there will be another opportunity for an alternate member of the board, because right now we don't have an alternate. We have room for one, but we haven't, we don't have one. So anyone watching or anyone present who has an interest in volunteering to serve on our board, contact the town hall and let them know. So now we can call the first case on the agenda, sorry about that.
That's okay. Case number ZB 2025 dot 12 dot 01. Request by Lantec acting as agent for Eagle Ridge Properties LLC is seeking area variances for the proposed construction of two three-story apartment buildings totaling 93 units with less than required setbacks, parking, and exceeding maximum permitted height on premises 1720, 1732, 1750, and 1776 Hudson Avenue in the R5 residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is John Shiraba with Lantec. My office is located 1105 Ridgeway Avenue, and I'm representing this application.
Do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, members of board, thank you for the time to listen to our application this evening. We're here tonight at the end of the year, but this project started in about March of this year. We, our firm was retained by Eagle Ridge LLC, which are the owners of this property. And they're, and I'm under the direction of the Cabot Group, which are managing the planning process. With me tonight from the Cabot Group is Bill and Jordan, and they can answer any questions that I cannot. Also with me tonight is Nate Rozzi, who is the architect of record on this project, and he could speak to the building if you have any questions related to that.
Okay, just a point of reference, any of those individuals who are present who intend to offer anything in relation to the application by way of information are also going to need to be sworn, so.
We understand that, I'm hoping to handle it myself, but you know, sometimes I need help.
I just wanted to make that, that point so that when I interrupt, if they do, that it doesn't come as a surprise.
Great. Well, as the public notice states, there are four properties in question. They're located on the east side of Hudson Avenue, approximately 1,000 feet north of Ridge Road, basically north of the plaza that's there. And these four properties are owned by the applicant, but they also own Eagle Ridge Apartments, which is to the east of here, which is a approximately 90-unit duplex apartment project on a private drive. And they also own an 18-unit property that was built about 10 years ago, that's an apartment. And these properties, the only four properties that we're talking about this evening are the properties that are listed on the public notice. And our intent, as this project moves forward, is to combine those properties into one for this project. And that being said, we, again, we started this project in March, met informally with town staff, attended several DRC meetings, and reviewed the concept that we had. We played particular detail and attention to the Ronacoy master plan that was updated in 2014 regarding design standards. And that really was our guide and why we're here this evening. So the master plan likes to see buildings pushed forward to create more of a walking community. And they, and that was kind of why, why we're here, is more of our major variances. The property then was zoned R1 back in May, and we had to petition the town board for rezoning. So the town board, through several public hearings, seemed fit to rezone it from R1 to R5, which allowed this project. The concept that we're proposing tonight is very consistent, what we did back with the town board, just some minor tweaks, because now we have an architect and we have a plan, a better building plan. So back, since that time in July, we were heard by the planning board in November for a conceptual review to get a flavor of their opinion of our layout. I believe it was very well received, they liked the building, they liked the layout. And then we decided to move forward to ask the variances that we're requesting. So I guess the, as far as the variances, I'm going to talk them in general terms, and you can, you can, I'll go over the site one more time. So we call this building one, that's the building that's close to Hudson Avenue, that has 52 units in it, it is 23,000 square feet roughly, and three stories tall. Code requires us to have 50-foot setback from the right-of-way of Hudson Avenue, and we're pushing that closer to the right-of-way, and we're requesting 20 feet. Also, we have a side setback of 50 feet from the private drive, and we're requesting a 30-foot setback from that. So that's the variances we're needed for that. And then we also have the same variance for a rear setback of the building for building number two. But again, as I mentioned, that's private lands owned by the applicant, so it's a property line. It's not a right-of-way, and I'm hoping that the board sees fit that that setback, it gives us a variance for that. So those are the setback variances that we're requesting. And, but again, these, the plan is intended to follow the guidelines as mandated in the master plan, and I think works very well. The next issue we come up to is parking. So parking is a very interesting concept as far as what we need for this project. The town code requires two spots for every apartment, so that comes out to 186 units. That's very challenging on this site. But we're thankful that the Cabot Group is here and they have implicit knowledge of what's going on with the 18-unit building that they have, that is meets zoning, but it's fairly empty. And the, and they also understand what's going on with the 90-unit duplex units behind. They have a, they have a community that's generally older in these situations, and they're taking, taking one car is usually what's going on. They also take advantage of the public transit with buses and things like that. You know, the Cabot Group and Eagle Ridge LLC, they're in business, they're in that business to hurt themselves. So they, they feel very comfortable with about 140 spots to service their tenants. And if they were deficient of that number, they would feel that this wouldn't work very well. So they're comfortable with the layout that we provided. I think it's going to work well for their tenants and the way that they run their business. And, and that's the other variance that we're, that we're kind of going for. The building height variance, these are three-story buildings. And I, and.
Nate can come up and speak to him if you have more detail.
This would be the elevation looking from Hudson Avenue. So they're very good-looking buildings. The roof design is set up to be, the third floor is kind of the roof element. All the mechanicals, the HVAC and cooling are on the roof and well-screened from the neighbors and traveling public. We think it's a very, a good design, and we think it's going to work well for the Ronacoy community. So the code requires 30 feet, and we're at 38 feet for the height variance, so we're deficient of that. But I think the board could look at this design and see that it's going to be a really benefit to that whole Hudson Avenue corridor. It's going to look like something we don't have in town, and it's kind of has a good feel. And we hope that the height will not be an issue. Again, this, this is the same kind of concept that town boards seem fit to rezone to R5, and I think we're in good shape. Going back to parking and things like that, one of the, one of our public meetings, or actually a staff meeting with the DPW director and the director of planning, was going back to parking and coverage. They felt that it would be benefit to have a little more green space than the parking. So anything we could do to increase green space and not add parking, so that's one area. If you look at our southwest corner, we show this stormwater management area, and that is going to be some stormwater management that we have to meet. So there's a permit that the board's familiar with, it's a stormwater management permit. We are going to have to get that permit, so we need some green space. We didn't want to put parking in there, we could have increased the parking by about 20 more spots, but we felt that the green space in was staff review. I also like to point out that we do show some parking off-site, but it is within our holdings over near existing stormwater pond to get that parking up there a little bit more. So that's kind of a quick overview of the plan. Again, we took the guidelines from the master plan, we went through the rezoning process, and we actually went to the planning board. So right now it's tracking very nicely. And if we're looking to move forward, if we're, if we're, have the fortune of getting approved tonight, we're going to be making final design plans and getting submitted back to the planning board for site plan and subdivision approval. So with that, I can try to answer any questions you have.
Am I, am I correct in looking at the plans that unless the buildings are as you're proposing, there's not enough room for even the limited parking that you have planned?
Yeah, it would, it would, it would not work out very well, you know.
And then the 16 additional spaces that are kind of off to the, to the side.
Yes.
I take it those aren't really planned on being used? They don't look very practical in terms of the people that you're describing, who would be the tenants?
Correct.
Walking from like that far space, or even the closest space, all the way over to that building one?
You're very perspective in that, you know, we're just trying to say, yes, we can find some more spots. As I mentioned, this is the 18-unit building. There's some spots there that are available, and there's going to be some synergy between those buildings in our design. I failed to point out that on our, on our plan, on building number two on the, on the southern end, there's a room for a garage, maintenance garage, there's going to be a leasing office. So some of those areas in there, that, that's going to help to take care of more of the project itself, both properties, the 18-unit and the 90-unit next door. You know, we even had ideas of incorporating some parking spots on the east side of the private drive of Eagle Ridge Circle there, to get some more spots. So I think what, what we would like to do is, you know, kind of let market dictate. If they need some more spots, maybe we come back to the planning board, but they feel with the fact that we have a balance of the two-bedroom and one-bedroom, almost a 50-50 split, that this will work for them.
The, the two-story brick-and-frame apartment building that's shown at the bottom of the area next to the stormwater management area?
Yes.
You said that's 18 units?
That's 18 units, and it was built about 10 years ago.
Right, and is that also part of the same applicant?
It is not. It was part of the rezoning process that we went through, because it was zoned R1, so we incorporated that, but it's not in the site plan process.
All right, and I noticed that on this, that shows 15 parking spaces for the 18 units.
Yes.
Are they having any, are they experiencing any parking difficulties, if you know?
So not at all, from what I understand, I don't know, I haven't reviewed the numbers you just mentioned, 18, but we also have a member of Lantec who lives there, and I asked him if how he's doing there, if he had any parking problems, and he has, had done.
When they come into the project, is it like one way going in off of Eagle Ridge and then out the other way?
It is, it is not, designed full 24-width drive lanes in that area, so they can come in both ways.
They come in both ways, I need to say.
And we also have another access point to the southeast corner, where the maintenance area is. And then it'd be another way for emergency vehicles or any other vehicles to come through.
How many maintenance people are going to be there? Because that'll be taking up a little bit of your parking, I would assume, also.
So I know that they probably have some summer staff to bring in, but I think it's one or two people at a, at the max to manage this. And they could park other places off this actual campus.
Maybe a question for the fire marshal, she's, since she's here. Does that entrance look enough for you to get a ladder truck in there? Because I'm assuming you got to have a ladder truck to get up high, and I don't know if that area has a ladder truck.
It's, there's, sorry, there's different radiuses, so without, that, that just being like a sketch, it's hard to say, you know, where the turnaround's going to be, but I'm sure that when it comes down to it, fire code is what is going to be that.
Yep, we'll make sure during the site plan phase, if we're fortunate to get there, we'll make sure that's addressed.
If I understand correctly from my previous employment, code requires at least an 18-foot width for emergency vehicles.
And we have 24.
Okay.
Good evening, I, I'm Andrew, I have a few questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
The first is, did you, do you have any pushback from the neighbors for putting a three-story building there, because it's going to overshadow the other building, most of them are two stories, and, and you know it's going to be a three-story? You have any pushback from any of the neighbors?
At the town board level, we had a few neighbors show up, nothing regarding height, more about traffic and impacts related to that. So height was not an issue with the neighbors during those public hearings.
That leads me into my, my next question, you said they, they was concerned with the traffic. Will there be a new traffic light, control light in the entrance at Eagle Ridge?
Not at this time, I don't foresee the Monroe County DOT requiring one. So Hudson Avenue in this area is a Monroe County road. They liked our plan because we're taking out three access points onto Hudson Avenue from the existing buildings that are there, and then we're putting it into our private drive, so there's a better queue when they go up to Hudson Avenue. We understand Hudson Avenue is a busy road, and during the site plan process, if they have some requirements that we'll have to adhere to when it gets into their hands, we'll do whatever the DOT wants.
Yes, but I noticed that most of the, the entrance exit driveway that you spoke about, they are low, low-traffic areas, and you're putting in something that's going to be heavy traffic. But let me move on if you don't mind.
Sure.
I noticed you're putting in a retention management pond there, which means that's an overflow of water. Does that mean you're not going to have catch basin in the parking lot?
Yeah, so I, I took the benefit of showing that green area. A lot of times I color them blue, so they look like a pond. So it's going to be, so as I said earlier, so in order to develop this property, we have to get a DEC stormwater management permit. And some of that is reducing the runoff, incorporating what's, what was once green, green area and the pavement, how to address that, water quality and water volume. So we don't have the exact how that's going to work yet, but we know it's going to go east. After talking to the Public Works Director, she wants to make sure that this water right now currently goes from west to east, and there's an area right here. That's where this, that's where the water's going to. So we're going to direct that and work with the DPW and make sure that, along with our permit that we're going to get from the DEC, that we make sure we help out the town. So there will be catch basins and other storm structures in this project.
So you will have catch basins?
Yes.
Okay, you've got room for one more, two more?
Yeah, these are good questions.
The next thing is the snow, what are you going to do with the snow?
So snow storage is always fun, you know, it's like four months of the year we have to deal with it. So snow storage would generally be pushed to the, down to the stormwater managements, anywhere area where we have space. In this type of setup, it's not unusual for us to have to have that snow trucked off-site. So it's not something we want to do, but we might have to push it off, from here and put it into other places that we have room. It might be in Eagle Ridge Circle, on other holdings that the applicant owns. But it would have to make sure that it's out of this parking area. Obviously with the request for the variances, parking's going to be, you know, highly sought after.
Yes, especially in the winter time around the holidays, when people have relatives coming from out of town, you're going to have more park, more cars trying to park in that parking lot.
Correct.
But you mentioned that the land behind building number two is owned by the applicant.
Yes, it is.
And so, which is okay for now, is it possible that that land may be sold off to someone else later on, and they may not have the same?
That's, that's very perceptive, yes, this is a world that we're all business people, and you know, things transpire and things get sold. So, yes, that could be sold in the future. But I think that we want to make sure that this project stands on its own, and that's why we're here for variances. I'd like to point out to the board that, you know, we could have alleviated one of the variances on building two by moving the property line. Again, that's, that's, that's not a public right-of-way, I could have shifted that right-of-way. It's a lot more cost on the applicant to alleviate that variance with moving that property line, doing a formal subdivision of the whole holdings. But we feel that the variance is in the character of the, of the master plan and requiring that. So I think this should stand alone with the variances we're requesting and not affect the Eagle Ridge Circle development.
So since this, just one more problem?
Yeah, no, go, these are good.
Since it's a three-story apartment, and as you know, sometime senior people like myself, I'm a senior, move in, and is there, what type of elevators will you have? We have freight elevators, or just regular elevators, or?
I think there are going to be one elevator per building, but I, it will be able to handle people moving in and out. So I, I, there won't be a differentiation between, so the same elevator they use for just the, the normal traveling people up and down is going to be what they're going to use to move in as well.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
What, what type of constructions are building going to be?
Well, I, like a, like a masonry or a stick build, is that your question?
Well, is this going to be wood frame or metal frame?
I might have to get Nate, you have more questions related to building? Because I might want to get Nate up here to talk to the, wood building, wood frame.
Okay, will it be franked, Lord?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Are you tearing down, in your, in your prospectus here, it pointed out several buildings that are already there that are in need of renovation. Does that mean you're tearing them down?
Correct, yeah.
So basically, when we, when, when we look at that whole partial and stuff, and then when I went, went over there and kind of walked around and such like that, I was thinking, this one, this one, this, so basically everything that's there is going to come down.
Correct, everything except the eight-unit building at the southeast corner of the site, yeah.
Okay.
Which is the one the applicant doesn't own?
Oh, they own that one as well.
Oh, they do?
Yes, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
The, the brick-and-frame apartment building?
Uh, I don't know if I, is it this, this one you're talking about?
Yeah. Okay, that's, so those.
But it's not part of the application?
No, but I was, when I asked about that, the reason I was asking was because of those 15 parking spaces, and, and if they're not all occupied all the time, then that means that there's additional that would be available for some overflow besides the 16 that are kind of like, you might need a shuttle to get from.
Yes, yeah, right, so I guess, yeah, to recap that, there is going to be some synergy between the 18-unit building and this project. And if there's spots that need to be swapped out, or people could move over there, or if the maintenance men have to park over there and work in the building, that's going to be quite all right.
This may sound like a trivial question, do you know where these are going to be? One-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom? I'm trying to gauge, given, I know Eagle Ridge is, has a high, what's called a veteran population?
Yes.
People who've been around a while, and people who are selling homes in Ronacoy where they've lived for a long time and don't want to care for them anymore, are, I would think are tending to be among the people who would be interested in these units.
Yes.
So I'm just trying to gauge the size that they would be.
So the breakdown I have and that I was provided is that we have 42 one-bedroom apartments. We have five bed, one-bedroom apartments with a den, and then we have 46 two-bedroom apartments.
Okay. Not that I'm thinking of moving, but.
And the other thing I should point out that these are market rate, this is not subsidized, you know, so they're, just so you have a understanding.
Is it going to be, I know there's, I've heard that there's housing where there's a 55, I think it is, limit on, that you have to be at least 55 to live there?
We're not limiting that.
You're not doing that, okay, all right. Any other questions?
In your prospectus, it mentioned, mentioned as an example of the building across the street, I think it said?
No, I, I don't, the, the best example I can give you, if you're familiar with Penfield Road, going down into Panaman Trail area, there's a, a building that was built on the left side over the old quarry. I think that's the only thing that's really similar in, at this point.
Where it's going with that question was that you said in here that this could all be market rate. The building across the street that you referenced in the prospectus, is that still market rate? Or has it changed since?
I guess I'm not, in my, in my, the letter I provided about the adjacent properties, I think you're speaking to, I was just going to the uses. I can't speak if that's market rate or not, across the street from this on?
That's what, that's what it said.
Yeah, I was just kind of noting that the project itself is in the character of the neighborhood, the fact that there are several apartment projects around, I can't speak to that, if that's subsidized or not.
But the two-story that the applicant owns isn't subsidized, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's, now Eagle Ridge, the private drive, does that border the office building that then borders the parking lot, that then borders other apartments?
It borders it, but they don't have access to it.
No, 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 I, I just was thinking, as you're going down the line, you're going to have the original building from 10 years ago, then these two buildings, then a commercial office building, and then the parking lot, and then two more apartment buildings are there.
Correct.
Okay. I'll also say I was very impressed that there were four signs along Hudson. That's how I found out that something was going on before we got our agenda. That happens, yeah, they get knocked down sometimes.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Do you have any plans of actually requiring a maximum number of cars per unit?
We could limit it to two in the lease, but we never really thought about that, I can talk to my client.
I agree that I, with my comrades here, that I think that the parking might be kind of tight. There are lots of people who, couples for example, would have a one-bedroom unit and they would have two cars.
Yes.
You mentioned that you're going to have some with, one, one bedroom units with a den.
Yeah.
You can easily convert that into a bedroom.
Well, I think we could do that in the lease, that that's not allowed to convert, because remember this is not, these aren't for sale, so they're managed by-
I understand that.
Yeah.
I mean, not convert, use.
Use, yeah.
You wouldn't know that.
Right.
They're not going to tell you that.
Right, that's true.
But that's more cars.
Yeah. Yeah, we can limit the maximum of two cars per, per unit. I guess that's kind of where, you know, the code says that and they're finding in their business model that it doesn't really work out that way. That it's usually about one point two-five per unit.
Because a lot of the people are going to have one car instead of two.
Or some have none.
Or none, right, yeah.
So Hudson Avenue, obviously with the new bus terminal we got and it's, it's really, you know, promoting that kind of walking community and, and, you know, close to a lot of amenities here, but they don't need a vehicle.
The environmental mapper indicated that this was, this is a remediation site, do you know the background of that?
I don't think it was this site, or something within a, within a half mile that was, that I couldn't research and find.
Any other questions?
On the secret forms, a couple of things here said, for example, in question number one, says the proposed action only involve legislative adoption of a blah, 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 blah. And if yes, attach a narrative description. And question number two, it said if yes, agencies name it, permit or approval and there's another one here, proposed action to meet or exceed the state energy code requirements, you said yes and provide, and you're supposed to provide design features and technologies, but I don't see an attachment explaining those points.
So when, when we talk about variances, it's always getting some of those things about the energy code. I'm sure that Nate can speak to the energy code and how this building will, will make, make sure that meets it. But the, you know, and with the, that secret form is, is a broad form to try to cover much stuff, so yes, we will meet it. I think, I, I think I noted, maybe I didn't end it incorrectly, but as far as regulatory boards for this, it's the zoning board and eventually the planning board that needs to approve this project, we already have the variant, the rezoning in place. So I don't know if I, if I missed that on that, if I do, I apologize, we can-
Well, I'm just going on, you know,
Yeah.
It said these three, these three questions said provide description to the agency and stuff like that and that's not attached.
Okay, yeah, I did not find descriptions for those.
Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about parking spaces, heights of buildings, anything of where you put stormwater or anything like that that was discussed? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter. Then we'll move on to the next case on the agenda.
Case number ZB two zero two five dot one two dash zero two, request by Santiago cigar factory is seeking an area variances to operate a retail store slash shop, less than one thousand feet from the nearest property line of a school, playground or childcare facility and less than seven, seven hundred and fifty feet from the nearest public entrance of one or more existing licensed tobacco retailer dealer or vapor products dealer. On promises three eighty Empire Boulevard in the C Business District.
Good evening, my name is Art Intulucci and I'm acting as agent for the Santiago cigar factory. My address is twenty-two fifty-one East Main Street, Rochester, New York, Unit Six.
If you could raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Before you get underway, there's a couple of things that I wanted to address that were in the submission.
Yes, sir.
The first was, I believe I saw a statement somewhere indicating or setting forth the view that this board had created a precedent by the action with respect to the seven eleven store some time ago. What I want to make clear is that's not a precedent. That each case is based on its individual facts. That establishment was already in existence before the town board passed the ordinance that restricts the location of tobacco product properties like this. And it involved the move across the street and the change in the distance between the school, that was the issue there, and the property was less than ten feet as I recall. So that, that's not a precedent saying, well, you know, you've approved seven eleven, so, you know, it's, you have to approve us. The other, the other thing I want to address is because we've had two applications within the last year and a half. Both of them involved proposed retail establishments for Arundecoye Plaza, which we have denied based on the ordinance. Now, the town board in enacting that ordinance, in my view, and I believe others on the board may share my view, found as a fact that these kinds of establishments have a negative impact on the community. But my understanding of that ordinance is that that was directed towards establishments whose primary function is retail of packaged and manufactured products, cigarettes, vapes, things of that nature. I believe it was passed shortly after the town decided to welcome marijuana distributors into the town. And that that was intended to prevent proliferation of that kind of establishment and to limit it. But from what I understand, your operation, the operation that you're talking about here, am I correct that that's not really geared towards retail as much as it is manufacturing the product onsite and even a number of people consuming it onsite, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so the retail-
There is an element of retail for sure.
Right.
But it's not the primary element of the business.
All right, and that's, that's one of the things that I think separates this from some of the other establishments, like I don't think this is really comparable to a seven eleven. I mean, people aren't walking in and walking out with-
I, I agree with you.
Yeah, okay, and as I saw the, I think I saw somewhere in there that the product that's manufactured and, and offered for retail ranges from eight to thirty-five dollars a cigar.
Yes.
Which is a lot more than the old nickel cigar. Yeah, so it's not exactly like people are walking in off the street to just pick up, these are people who are coming because they are attracted to the particular kind of product that you're offering, right?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on all of that.
Thank you for those clarifications.
Okay, thank you, now I'll let you present yourself.
Well, you did, you did a lot of the work for me already and I appreciate that.
Oh, one other question I had, which one of the, is it the second property in, the storefront in from-
As you face-
From the east side?
As you face the building, it's on, it's on the extreme right end, where the bank used to be.
At the extreme right end?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That makes it clear.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so as, as, as been understood already in the agenda, et cetera, the variances are section two thirty-five, one seventy-nine A one, which means we're within a thousand feet of the school, in this case the Hellendale Road School at two twenty Hellendale Road. And the second one being two thirty-five, one seventy-nine A two, which means that we're too close to seven eleven, within seven hundred and fifty feet. And as you said, I think it's important when you're developing an application like this, or any application to look at the legislative purpose and intent that supports the provisions of the code. And of course, this one relates to public health, the overriding concern and the effects of tobacco and nicotine, negative effects. And in particular, it seeks to protect adolescents and sites their brains very being very susceptible to the effects of tobacco and nicotine. It also seeks to limit the concentration and density of these kinds of uses because they have been shown, I believe, to create higher rates of use and initiation of use among adolescents and youths, so that's understood. And as you said, and thank you, we are a manufacturer of high-end handmade premium cigars. We distribute those cigars, wholesale those cigars, we do have a retail element, we have a cigar lounge and we have master roller service for events such as weddings and golf tournaments, et cetera. We are not, as you-
What does that entail?
That entails going to the location of the event, to the golf course or to the wedding with our master roller, that's part of the show if you will, and selling cigar, providing packages of cigars that can be given away at the, at the event.
So that's not done at the property?
No, only the preparation of the cigars.
Preparation, right.
Yes, yes. So as, as you pointed out, we are not a convenience store, we are not a vape store, we do not sell cigarettes, we do not sell vape materials, glass products or wrapping papers and anything of that nature. And as a matter of fact, we don't sell other cigar products, it's only what we make there that we would sell on a retail basis. With respect to our proximity to the seven eleven, note again that it's very distinctly different uses here. Seven eleven has machine-made tobacco products, mass-produced. They are widely available. They are relatively inexpensive and they do, they are open to the general marketplace and the youth market as well. The cigar factory is, it's more of a niche kind of use, it's very specialized use, to the extent that we are one of forty of these kinds of uses nationwide. And that's how selective and specific it is. The clientele is typically middle-aged professionals. And once again, our price point of eight dollars to thirty-five dollars in and of itself is restrictive of attracting the youth market. With respect to the standards, the primary determining standard, as you know, is a weighing of the benefits to the applicant as opposed to the detriment to the health, safety and welfare of the neighborhood or the community. We think there's a lot of benefits to this applicant. This is really, I have to say, a perfect place for this multifaceted operation. We have made unfortunately unsuccessful attempts over the last year, so to find another location either to purchase it or lease it. That hasn't worked out for us due to the vagaries in the marketplace as well as, you know, parking, floor layout, size, access, any of those reasons, and many of them the same, but it just hasn't worked out. But the space at four hundred Empire Boulevard is very well-suited to our use and, and the different parts of our use. The lease at our current location is not being renewed. So we need to find a new home and to do that rather quickly. This place has, also has very favorable lease terms and, you know, this is a family business with limited resources, so it's really a small business in, in that sense. And that we can just better operate our entire operation from this location than we've been able to do at prior locations. With respect to the detriment to the neighborhood, we don't, we don't really see any impacts to the school, I mean, we're only a hundred and sixteen feet short of meeting the thousand-foot requirement, so it's, it's kind of a de minimis thing. In some cases, they allow administrative variances for that ten percent. And we don't do that in Arundecoye, I don't believe.
I know that, I believe the ordinance measures it from the property line of the school to the property line of-
As the crow flies.
Right.
Yes.
But having gone down there, you are set way back from Empire Boulevard, but the thousand-feet requirement would be measured up to the edge of basically Empire Boulevard, so there's what, four or five hundred feet between there and the, and the road?
Yeah, so, so that's why, and we, we understand the law, it is as the crow flies, don't argue with that in any way. But the effect, if you want to consider that from a practical standpoint, is to look at the distance from our lot line along established pedestrian routes to the nearest point at the school lot. And that's a little over a thousand feet, but if you were to take it from the front of our building, you're talking more than fifteen hundred feet. So that, yes, you're absolutely correct with that. The five considerations that you look at in granting a variance, first one, will there be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood? Or nearby properties? With respect to the thousand-foot setback requirement, again, to reiterate, we're only a hundred and sixteen feet short, so it's very close. There is no visual access from our site to the school or vice versa, obviously. We are separated from the school by residential neighborhoods and, and Hellendale Road. And the school is actually, I found, is K through second grade. So that to some degree answers the concern about exposure to adolescents, et cetera, I would think.
I don't see second graders coming in to buy a twenty-dollar cigar.
I can say, I've been going to the smoke shop for years, never saw one.
Yeah.
But I guarantee you that second grader would be proved.
I would think so.
Is there an alternative to this, requesting the variance? It's a fixed building location, we can't move it, we can't, there's anything, nothing we would do to, could do to the site that would avoid the variances?
Well, it's not the building location or the characteristics of the building that's the problem. It's the proposed use of the building.
Right.
Which creates the problem and the only alternative solution is find another place to locate the business, which you indicated you've been trying and unsuccessful, right?
Yes, yes, and there currently are no, no other locations either nearby or anywhere in the city, city or town that is within the ownership or control, control of the applicant that would be available to us in any way.
And am I correct that, as I recall, this particular area of the building that you're going to be occupying has been vacant for at least ten years?
That's correct.
Right? And as someone pointed out to me, this is the site of the old Blue Gardenia Restaurant, right? Wasn't that in that plaza?
That I don't know, I know it was a bank.
It was, it was.
It was, okay. That's enough of a reference there.
I got it.
All right.
So going on with the standards, is this request substantial? Not to beat at that horse, but again, we're fairly close to meeting the requirement. And as you mentioned, effectively the distance is, is, is greater, although clearly not meeting the code. Uh, and as you mentioned, effectively, the distance is, is, is greater, uh, although clearly not meeting the code, uh, as it calls for, uh, a, uh, a bird's-eye measurement. Now, in terms of the seven-eleven, we're within the seven hundred and fifty feet of that. Uh, but we are miles apart in terms of the kind of use we have, the product we have, and the operation that we have. So it's very, very different. Will there be an impact to, uh, physical impacts or environmental impacts associated with what we're doing? There are no physical changes proposed to the site. There will be no emissions from the building. In terms of the environmental conditions within the building, uh, we will have, um, a, a really state-of-the-art, very costly, uh, high-end air filtration system going on in the building. And I have the specs for that, should the board desire to see them, or I can leave them with you, whatever you, whatever you would like. I don't understand it myself, but maybe you will. Um, and the other thing that's, I think, compelling in terms of seeker compliance, that this is a type-two action, I'm told by staff. And type-two actions, as you know, are determined by regulation to not have a significant impact on the environment.
Except that we've been told and advised that it's an unlisted action.
That's not what I was told.
Well, I'm going by what our attorney's office told us, and there's a, uh-
Yeah, I think the, the typical type-two is for the, for the residential setbacks. Um, I don't think it neatly fits under, but they'll go through the analysis.
But I, I, I was told by staff that that was the case, so that's why it's in the application. But I understand what you're saying. So is this situation self-created? I think there's always some element of self-creation with these variances. In this case, the applicant did not have actual knowledge of the regulation, um, but he certainly had constructive knowledge of the regulation. And he did sign the lease.
But I reviewed the terms of the lease, and the lease gives them an out if, if we-
Oh, yeah.
If we say no.
True.
Unlike my understanding of other situations, that doesn't have that clause in it.
Right.
Uh, so-
Exactly right.
While he wasn't aware of the regulations, somebody was.
Yeah.
And provided an, uh, safety valve for the applicant.
Got it, got it. So to that extent also, we haven't begun to, uh, um, build out in the building or move any products into the building once we knew that we had, we did have to come here. So we really would suggest, uh, that, um, given the benefits to the applicant that we've described, which we felt are significant in this case, um, and with no discernible detriment in terms of proximity to the school or the density and concentration, uh, issues. Given also there's no reasonable alternatives that we see, uh, the variance is not substantial. And there are no, uh, environmental impacts, uh, but now we've known this is a type, uh, is a, uh, unlisted action for which we'll make a determination of tonight. So given those factors, uh, we believe they would outweigh the concern with respect to self-creation in this case. So, um, that's what I have. Uh, Gary Leota is here, uh, from the, uh, the owner and operator of the Santiago cigar factory. So if you have questions about the specific process of, cut cigars and all that stuff, he, he could clearly answer them. And, uh, I guess that's it, that's what we have. Uh, is there any, any other questions the board has?
I have one over here.
Oh, there, sorry.
What are the hours of operation? And, um, if somebody is gonna go out there to try a cigar and stuff, do they make a reservation? Can they walk in off the street? Um, you know, that's, that's-
Can walk in off the street.
Okay.
There are, are no reservations. Hours of operation in the new place? Ten to ten.
Ten to ten?
Yeah.
Seven days a week? Sundays off. You and Chick for what?
Uh, good evening, I have a, I have a couple just so I can totally understand. You certainly have plenty of parking there.
Lot of parking. It was one of the attract, uh, one of the attractiveness of the property, one of the things that attracted us, yes.
Okay, along with that, uh, the building looked like it's need a facelift. Are you planning on putting a fancy sign or something out there, or painting that end of that building?
Plan on having a sign. We haven't gotten that far yet. Uh, we know, uh, the town has a, a sign code, uh, which we'll do everything that we can to operate within that in terms of the sign or signage that we would propose to have. Uh, so we'll have to come back, uh, and get a permit for that, or come to the board should we be, um, not, uh, lined up with that requirement. Repaint the front of the facade? Oh, okay.
They di- they denied that? Spruce it up a little bit. Um, I've visited a cigar-smoking bar before, so just so I can understand where yours is designed. So you go in there and you have a display of cigars there that you can choose? Then you pay for them and go into another room where you got a nice fireplace with a flag going, with nice leather chairs and, and you sit in there and-
Football on the TV, yes.
Is that what, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, pretty much. We have a large humidor, you know, which, uh, protects all of our cigars that's, uh, you could see into it. Um, so that's where the main, uh, product is kept. We do have a roller, uh, again, a, a, a very art- artesian roller, um, that rolls cigars for our stock and potentially for events as well, uh, that can be viewed by people that come in, uh, and see the process of making each cigar.
Well, good. When I went to the cigar bar, the cigar cost me more than twenty dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, um, just for the record, no alcohol on premises?
We do not sell alcohol.
Pardon?
We do not sell alcohol.
Okay, no plans to?
No plans to. Yeah, doesn't allow us.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yes, um, considering you have a combustible or flammable product, have you had a review from the, uh, fire marshal, fire inspector to determine your combustible load and maximum amount of, of materials that you're allowed to have there? And has the building been determined to be able to handle potential fire danger with an adequate fire system?
No applicant has been se- received on the fire marshal line, so I can't speak to that.
That's important.
Yeah, understood.
But that would be something that the town would require before it was occupied, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Is this, is this project gonna require, um, site plan approval, planning board? I wish Michelle was here, she would know.
Uh, in my discussions with Michelle, no. The answer was no, doesn't require site plan.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll open it up to public input. Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Step right up. Sir, if you could step away from the podium, if you give us your name and address, please?
Jordan Debs, sixty-nine Lakely Road. Just by coincidence, I was here for the other matter, but I can attest to the quality of their cigars. In October, uh, I had a buddy turning fifty, I don't smoke cigars. I searched online, I think they're one of the only licensed master roller outside of New York City. And I shipped, um, ten cigars that were recommended by the owner to my buddy, and he loved them. And I think he's now a repeat customer, so I think it's a good business.
Anyone else here that would like to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening, my name's Jim Feely. I live at ten sixty-one Winona Boulevard, so I'm a, a proud Aranacote resident. Um, I've had the pleasure of knowing the applicants for close to twenty years. And I'm just here to vouch in terms of, they're good men, hard-working men, uh, there's, I haven't been offered a ride on a yacht yet. And they're family men, uh, their fathers, their grandfathers. They've turned down, on many occasions, the lucrative opportunity to, to CBD products, vapes, all cigarettes. And they've refused to do that, um, and, and I'm proud to know them as people that refuse to do that based on their beliefs. I wouldn't be a customer of Santiago if they sold the kind of products that some of other people do in order to make money at the risk of, uh, uh, many people's health. Um, so I, uh, I truly hope that you'll take all that into account and, uh, continue to allow them to, uh, to have a livelihood. Thanks so much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the application?
My name is John D. Giovanni. I live at number ninety-eight Clifforddale Park. And I'm one of the neighbors. I'm an occasional cigar smoker. I go to the cigar hut. You guys know where that is. By the way, these gentlemen, I've seen for the very first time about an hour ago when I walked in. So I, I have no knowledge of any of these guys at all, I just wanted to say that for the record. It seems like your proposal is gonna be more expensive than buying a cigar at the cigar hut. But the reason I'm standing here to say what I, what I think, I thought this was kinda gonna be some fly-by-night operation that was trying to get a place to sell cigars. And, and I found out very quickly, it seems as though this is not that at all. It seems like they've done their homework. It, it seems like, as far as I'm concerned, and I'm a neighbor, believe me, I live directly behind the Empire Plaza. I, I, as a neighbor, I see no reason why they should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about rolling cigars, or how expensive cigars are or aren't? I'm seeing no other, uh, um, seeing no interest in that. We will, uh, close the hearing with respect to this matter, and the board will be in recess until, uh, eight-ten. And who's going second? So, um, with respect to the application pertaining to seventeen-twenty, seventeen-thirty-two, seventeen-fifty, and seventeen-seventy-six Hudson Avenue, this is a, uh, unlisted action for seeker purposes. And everyone should have received, I believe, a copy of the seeker, uh, assessment form. Has everyone had an opportunity to review that? I would make a motion that we find, make a negative declaration. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any questions about the assessment form? I know, Mr. Devlin, you'd raised a couple of questions earlier, but I think those were answered, right?
I'm not sure.
Well, kind of may, sort of maybe, answered?
I think we're being asked to trust that it'll be done. Been asked that before, and it hasn't always happened. And that's no reflection on you.
I, I think with the, the action involving legislative adoption of a plan, that first thing, I think what the yes refers to there, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what it referred to there was the town board rezoning it from R-one to R-five.
That could be.
And I think number two is related to what we're doing tonight, needing a variance coming in front of us.
Plus, plus I need building permits.
Yes. And then as far as the, uh-
There were two more, there was the state energy code requirements, number nine and number twenty.
The remediation, which he said was off, was in adjoining property. Does anybody have any other questions concerning the assessment form? Any discussion? All those in favor of finding a negative declaration with respect to this application, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, six votes in favor. I think, six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstention, and one, one seat is, uh, actually vacant now, not absent. Alright, with respect to the application itself, is, does someone wish to make a, a motion with respect to this application? Alright, I'll make a motion then that we, uh, grant the, uh, variances as requested. With respect to the factors and findings, uh, this will not result in a significant change to the character of the neighborhood. There are a number of multifamily residences in the immediate area. And, uh, across the street, across Hudson Avenue, within, uh, relatively, uh, short distance, less than a mile, there are two, uh, significant, actually, there's three significant apartment complexes. Across Hudson Avenue, on the same side of Hudson as this, there's another, uh, apartment complex between Ridge and, uh, whatever that, Brookview. So this is not, uh, introducing multifamily to an area that isn't accustomed to it. Uh, the alternatives that don't require a variance would, um, mean that there wouldn't be able to be enough, uh, uh, units to make it economically feasible, because as the applicant, uh, representative testified, the, uh, area for parking between the buildings as it's laid out with the variances accommodates, uh, enough parking, but without the variances, that narrow would be narrowed and the parking would be extremely less. Uh, it appears to be consistent with the revised, uh, master plan. Certainly appears to meet a, uh, need for this type of housing, uh, within the town. And, uh, the alternatives that wouldn't require a variance, uh, would really not, um, aren't really any. Uh, it is, whether the request is substantial or not depends on how you define substantially. Given the nature of the, uh, app, of the, uh, proposed project, the, uh, experience of the applicant and the people guiding them in terms of how many, uh, parking spaces are actually, uh, used in situations like this, the request does not appear to be, um, substantial. Uh, there's not going to be an adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions, uh, if the application is granted. Uh, the application, the situation is self-created only to the extent that the applicant owns the property and wishes to put it to a different use, uh, which factor would not be a reason, in my view, to deny, uh, the requested variances. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I have one question. I have one question. The parking and stuff like that, you know, still bothered by the fact that that's a twenty-five percent reduction from the required minimum number of spaces. And I guess my question is, do you have a contingency plan should you find yourself lacking enough spaces?
Yes, so I guess what we have is, um, I referred several times during the presentation about the eighteen unit building.
Yes.
I know the chairman identified some parking spots there, but we have a tremendous amount of parking on the southern property line of that property, um, which could be allocated for that use with the eighteen unit building. We have parking spots on the, on the north side of the eighteen unit building. So those, those uses could be used in common. I know that someone brought up if the properties were to be sold, we can incorporate cross-access easements. There's some, if the variances fail related to parking, there's some, you know, some difficult things we could do to, uh, to achieve the goals, but we think that, that we really like to move forward with the variances as noted.
I didn't say I was gonna vote no. I just, I was just concerned that, uh, that that could be a problem. I understand what you said earlier.
Yeah.
It's still.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. There's one vacancy tonight. All right, so the next application-
Mr. Chairman, I just wanna thank you for your time this evening, uh, related to this application. I look forward to working with you next year. Have a good holiday if I don't see you.
You also. Take care. Thank you. Good luck with your project, gentlemen. All right, the next application on the agenda is the application pertaining to, uh, three hundred and eighty Empire Boulevard, the Santiago cigar factory. This is an unlisted action for seeker purposes. I believe that everyone's received the seeker, um, assessment form. Are there any questions concerning the information on the form? Or I would make a motion then that, uh, the board adopt a, or make a negative declaration with respect to, uh, this project. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. With respect to the application itself, I'll make a motion that we approve the variances as requested with the following, uh, findings. First, this is not an application for a typical tobacco retail operation that, to which the ordinance adopted within the last several years by the town board, uh, appears to be directed. This is a, uh, quite a different, uh, application than the two that have been before us within the last two years that we have denied. Those were denied, oh, and I, I, I'm sorry, I forgot. My motion would be to grant the variance with the conditions. The conditions would be that the sale of vape products, cigarettes is prohibited. With that condition, it's clear that this is an operation that's totally different from the seven eleven that is in proximity. I, I think it's highly unlikely that a, there would be a significant overlap between the customers of the seven eleven and clientele of the cigar factory. The product is totally different. The price range is totally different. I think it's kinda like comparing used cars with a Maserati dealer. So I don't think, believe that this kind of operation is what the town board intended to, um, include within the ambit of that ordinance. And therefore, I don't think that this constitutes a change to the character of the neighborhood as the town board implicitly found that those other operations would bring. Also, I would, would note that in terms of the character of the neighborhood, this is an area in a, an existing plaza that has been operated commercially for a number of uses for a number of years. And this particular part of that, uh, plaza has been vacant for over a decade. So in terms of bringing a change to the neighborhood, character of the neighborhood, it will actually, I think, have a positive impact in terms of, uh, reinvigorating to some extent the, uh, use of that, uh, property. And that would be a benefit, uh, to the neighborhood. It also would mean that the, that portion of the property would now be occupied and it wouldn't be sitting there unoccupied, uh, subject to the vagaries that time and, and weather bring to structures that aren't regularly maintained and, and occupied. The request is not substantial when one takes into account the, uh, fact that the building in which this will be located is set so far back, close to five hundred feet, according to the survey from Empire Boulevard. The property line to property line measurement is slightly over eight hundred and fifty feet. When you put the other five hundred feet from Empire Boulevard back to where the building is, it's well above the thousand feet from the school. The school is an elementary school. It's, I believe that the town ordinance was directed in the concern with factory, with tobacco retail markets that was addressed by the town board, uh, related to adolescents, high school students, older students, uh, and having access to, uh, cigarettes and, and other, uh, tobacco products that are sold at a much, um, more, uh, accommodating price range and much more, uh, attractive to, uh, people in that, uh, category, which is not the category of clientele that is served by this, uh, applicant. There will be no adverse physical or environmental, uh, impact on the conditions, uh, by granting this variance. Terms of whether the situation is self-created, again, uh, this is a vacant parcel. They've been looking for a place to call home for a while and haven't been successful. And, uh, this property meets their needs. And it also, uh, as I said earlier, uh, allows for occupancy of a portion of property that's previously been unoccupied for a substantial period of time. So I don't believe that the factor of self-creation, uh, is, in this instance, an obstacle or a barrier to granting the variance with that condition about the vapes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. And there is a vacancy on the, on the board from our full complement of seven board members. Gentlemen, good luck with your business. Welcome to the town of Aronacote. All right, along with the, uh, information for the applications that were before us this evening, I believe everybody should have received, as I did, a draft of the minutes from our meeting on November third of this year. Is there anyone who, uh, first off, did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes? And does anyone have any proposed revisions, changes, alterations? Seeing none? I would move that we, uh, adopt the, approve the minutes as presented in draft. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in fa, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I'll abstain.
That's right, you weren't here. All right, so the motion carries. Five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention. And one seat on the board remains vacant. Again, I will express my thanks to Mr. Johnson for his service, uh, on our board. I enjoyed working with him. I, I think I speak for all of us when I say that. And, um, I wish him luck in whatever future endeavors he's pursuing when he's on his, the first Monday of every month when he would otherwise have been occupied. And I'm not sure is, do we have, uh, it's the end of the year, so I believe that one of us is finishing up a term this year? I don't think it's me. Anyone know if their term expires this year? Maybe it's the position that Mr. Johnson was filling. I don't know, but... All right, so as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we are, to those who are watching or may hear about it, we are in need of an alternate member and another member. So if anyone is interested in, uh, serving on the zoning board, you should contact the town and let them know of your interest. With that, I believe all the business that we have before us tonight has been concluded, so I will move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Six votes in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. There's one vacancy on the board. We are outta here.